Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this meeting of the city, the Wilmer City Council, to order at 7:00 PM. On behalf of the council, I would like to extend a warm welcome and thank you for joining us this evening. Your presence reflects the strong commitment to civic engagements and we truly value your interest in the work and the progress of our city. At this time, I would like to invite Pastor Rodriguez to lead us in prayer. Afterwards, Ms. Linda Diane will do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you for this invitation and we're glad to take part on this evening, on this meeting. Heavenly Father, we come in the presence of you and we put on your hands in this meeting and pray for each person of the board, of the leaders of this city of Wilmer. Thank you, Lord, because we put your presence in all the business, including the city of Wilmer. You bless this city, you bless each person on the board, on the leaders. In this moment, God, I give you thank you for the opportunity you give us to our part of this city and we kind of share what you're doing on this city. Continue to bless the major, the board, and each person on the government of the city of Wilmer. Thank you, Lord. Everything on this evening, we will try on your presence, blessing and give your blessing to each person to our part of this city. Thank you, Lord, and in the name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Amen. Ms. Linda will do the Pledge of Allegiance at this time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now move to our presentation items. I'll turn it over to our city secretary, Ms. Kristen Downs.
I have number one, presentation from the library, Summer Reports and Updates. We have our library manager, Nayeli Navarro, who is going to present for us.
Good evening. I'm glad to be here. I'm very nervous, but I'm glad to be here. I wrote it down so I don't miss anything, but you already have the reports that I provided to the city secretary. So I'm excited to share some highlights from our library this summer and show how we are engaging and supporting our community. My name, as she already said, is Nayeli Navarro and I'm the library manager at the E.M. Gilliam Memorial Public Library here in Wilmer. As many of you already know, summer reading programs are common in libraries across the country. They help children continue learning while school is out and support parents and teachers in maintaining the progress during the school year. I want to share with you some highlights from May, June, and July. And I want to make this clear, these are available on the website. You can go to the library section and all of these are there. So we have total physical circulation for the month of May. It was 333. For the month of June, 473. And for the month of July, 506. As you can see, there was an increase each month, a little bit of increase, but that's what we want, right? We want our books to move, to get out of the community when we want the community to read our books. And what we've been doing is the Teen and Adult Reading Challenge. It's a monthly challenge that we do, but we combine the three months for the summer. And the winner of the summer reading program, and you can find her in the back, is Ms. Deborah Hauser. She won everything. She won five prizes and she was really excited and we are excited to have her come to the library and get books. So I invite you to participate. If you'd like to read, come and see us. We have a book for you. And if we don't, we have our ILL program, which is Interlibrary Loan. If we don't have a book that you're looking for, and I'm telling the community too, you can come and ask and we will request it from another library and have it ready for you. You can pick it up in our library and we will ship it back to them. So you don't have to worry about that. Okay? So we hosted a lot of programs each month, too. We hosted 23 programs in May, 19 programs in June, and 17 programs in July. And we have some, when it has come in soon, we had the YMCA Tech Truck, Wildlife on the Move, Juneteenth Soul Line Dance Party. Ms. Linda was there. We danced and we have fun. I invite you to come to any program that we provide. Touch a Truck, we did it in partnership with the fire department, the police department, and Public Works. It was a success. We had more than 100 people show up. We have the Perot Museum. So if anybody says that there's nothing going on in Wilmer, come to the library because we have a lot going on at the library. We had the Dallas Zoo Animal Adventures. We had a petting zoo and we have a bubble show, okay? What else I have here? Also, if you see the new cars on June, 17 people got new cars, nine people on July, and eight people in May. So we had a total of 34 new pages. And I want to make an announcement. September is library card signup month, so we encourage you to stop by and get your library card, okay? What else? We have computers. If you didn't know, we have eight computers in the library and during the summer, 282 people use our computers, okay? And we had a total of, let me see, 2,752 people during May, June, and July came through our doors either to use the computers, to grab a book, or to make copies, scan. We can do it all. And it's just me and another lady and we can do it all. What else? And I'm going to read this. Finally, I want to share a phrase my boss always uses when referring to us, Wilmer. "Small by Mighty Library." Our collection may not be very big right now, but we are working to grow it. Just this past month, we got 126 new titles. And I can assure you that we don't want our shelves to be collectors of dust. We want our books to be used and loved by our community. And in the meantime, you can use our ILL program, like I already said. If you have any questions, if you have concerns, if you have suggestions, please feel free to stop by the library and talk to us. We truly love this community and the programs we are bringing to Wilmer. But we also know that there is always more we can do. So any help we can get from you is going to be appreciated. I brought some calendars. Check the calendar, check the website, and come and see us. Mr. Campos has been there. He was there last year for the Halloween party. We had more than 100 people in the tiny building. And for December, we had more than 200 in this building. So the community know that we're open, but we need to engage more. I think we need to engage more to everyone in this community and we're ready to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no community announcements and we have two citizen comments tonight. And we'll start with Mr. George Leverett.
George Leverett, 24 Meadow Lane, Wilmer, Texas. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. Appreciate this opportunity. I'm on the fourth item on the agenda this evening and I just want to address that so that there's no confusion on my part because I'm not sure why it's there, but I'm sure that'll be explained when it comes up. To let you know where my heart is, is I'm a servant and it is my heart to serve the city and the citizens of Wilmer. My understanding was that there's an issue with the CDC that it has become difficult to gain a quorum on the meetings. My thought was is since it's a committee of seven, I would gladly be on that board so that we could better our chances of having a quorum so that the city can move forward for our citizens. And that was the reason why I did the interest with being on the CDC. If there's an issue about being on two boards or two committees, my heart is on the PMZ, which is my preference. I believe that I have done an excellent job serving the city, being on the PMZ. I've gained the experience and the knowledge and I think I've been very effective in providing for the citizens of Wilmer. I believe if there's a question along those lines, you can ask Pam, Pat, Robert, Laurie. And I believe that they'll back me up on that as well, that I'm beneficial, being on the PMZ, which is where my heart is, if the issue is being on one or the other. The only reason I brought that up was because the item indicated there was a question about being on the PMZ instead of the CDC. And I just wanted to clarify that and let you know where my heart, my desire is. Thank you much.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Mike Rader.
Good evening. Mike Rader, 7231 Oak Alley, Colleville, Texas. I need some of that librarian energy. That's pretty good. Wilmer's seeing a lot of growth. Industrial growth is about done. Thousands of jobs in Wilmer. $3 billion worth of tax base. That's five times more than it was in 2020. Lots of growth. We're at a stage now where the industrials develop. We've got a base under us. It's time for the commercial, retail, and the community facilities to come together. Coming to Wilmer now is a medical facility, hotels, restaurants. We're working on a grocery store. And, you know, it's exciting. It is for me because it's been a long time. I know it's been a long time for Wilmer. Patients gets pretty thin sometimes, but we are solidly growing. Wilmer is growing. There are data centers coming. And I hear on the streets that people don't like data centers. Well, data centers bring a whole lot of tax base without trucks. Data centers are high-tech. They don't use a lot of water. Data centers, basically, water is personnel inside the building. They're totally air-cooled. But if there's someone who doesn't understand and see the new data center, we've got one in Wilmer that I'm sure I can get a tour of to take you over to look at it. There's $3 billion or more coming in data centers. Think about the revenue that comes into the city without all trucks and a bunch of industrial coming. You can use that for improving city streets, recreational facilities, a lot of other things that Wilmer's been looking for, for a long time. It's not the time to stop. It's the time to keep going because Wilmer's going to continue growing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rader.
Now on to the consent agenda. Item one, consider resolution number R2025-0904A, establishing sponsorship levels for city programs and events, authorizing the acceptance of monetary and in-kind donations, and adopting an administrative policy, Exhibit A, governing the acceptance, acknowledgement, and recording of such donations. Item two, consider resolution number R2025-0904E, amending the authorized signatories of Logic and adding Patricia Albrecht, Consulting Finance Director, and removing Patrick Harvey, Former Finance Director, and adding Sheila Pettit, Mayor and Acting City Administrator, and removing Chana Streetfeller from City Administrator, Former City Administrator. Item three, consider resolution number R2025-0904F, amending the authorized signatories at Techstar and adding Patricia Albrecht, Consulting Finance Director, and removing Patrick Harvey, Former Finance Director, and adding Sheila Pettit, Mayor and Acting City Administrator, and removing Chana Streetfeller, Former City Administrator.
Council, you have any questions?
Yes, ma'am, speak. Item number two, what is this, Logic? L-O-G-I-C. Everything's got code name over here. Logic. Then the next one is... Oh, no, that's logic. So what is that?
Ms. Patricia?
Logic and Techstar are the investment pools. They're bank accounts.
They're bank accounts.
That's a bank account. Okay. I guess what I was questioning.
Thank you. Any other questions? If there's no more questions, may I get a motion?
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
I would kind of like to remove item number one from the consent agenda so we could discuss it.
Then we will be voting on both two and three. May I get a motion? May I get a second? Please cast your vote. Two and three.
Yes.
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 Okay. It is five to zero. It is passed. Now we will go back to item one. Ms. Slough? You want to go back to item one?
It wasn't feeling.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
I was just wanting some more information about how this came about and how we expect it to proceed. Could someone give me some...
Yes, it came about with the upcoming budget and our events were going to need some help from our businesses out there. So we thought if we did a three-tiered thing, then we would give them advertisements for the event. So if, let's say, John Paul Mitchell, they wanted to donate to us, we would advertise at the event and they would help with like the bounce houses or the candies or the Christmas events to where the city isn't funding the whole entire event. That's how it came. And then so the next step would be if it's approved tonight, we would, there's a letter, a sponsorship letter that will go out to the businesses. If they approve and want to donate, then there would be a log kept by the city secretary's office with how much. I would do quarterly reports for y'all to let y'all know who's donated, how much they've donated, and what we put the items to.
Has there ever been a program similar to this in the city?
Not in our city. There has in others. And it's found a very high me.
The businesses are always asking us if they can help and this just is so we can keep track with the financials and make sure we have everything recorded and we're giving it to them. And that way y'all know if they say they donated money, we can say that we donated it to Sparks.
Right.
And it was the bounce houses. That way the city's not taking on those funds.
Honestly, I'm glad this is coming forward. I've been asking for this since I've been on the council and our events just expanded. If you think of Kaboom Town, north of us in Addison, their fireworks, they do a three-day weekend, Fourth of July, and it is 100% sponsored by community businesses and sponsors. You know, there is a format for that, but it is 100% legal. And that way, all the events that the city puts on is not 100% paid for by this on the flyers and advertisements that are posted in store windows. We would put their businesses. I know Sprouts personally had been asking, you know, what could they do to help?
Yes.
And so I know that's one business that will do that. I'm sure there's many others.
There is.
It is a common practice in cities. Our neighbor to the west of us, they have an event at their golf course every year that is sponsored by one of the banks in town. So, you know, I don't see this being a big issue. I think it's something that's been needed for several years.
So every June, I would bring the resolution to y'all for the next fiscal year. So those funds will be used the fiscal year, the next fiscal year. But like in talks with staff, the Christmas program that y'all did last year, we were too late in asking for help for the families. So we have to give them at least 90-day notice for them to donate and help us. So once this is passed in June, staff will go start getting the letters out to start with our 10-1 events to help that one.
And it will ask them what events they would like to sponsor. So they'll be the ones choosing, not the city.
What is, this money as it comes in, does it go into a separate, totally separate fund?
Yes, ma'am.
Not in with general fund?
No, 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 not with the general fund. It'll be in its own fund and I'll work with Patricia on it. I'll have the spreadsheet. That way we're both matching the funds together and like on a quarterly basis. If, let's say, it was Nike decided they wanted to donate now, that next quarter, I will tell y'all, Nike donated $5,000. This is what they donated. And then on the flyers, they will have their Nike logo. We will announce them on the stage that they donated the bounce houses or whatever they chose to donate. Then let's say the next quarter, we had JPS. They wanted to donate something. I will bring it back to y'all and let y'all know how much money is in that fund and how much has been spent.
This will be a first, I believe, for Wilmer.
It will.
So would you kind of like, you know, a handout?
Well, it's really not a handout. We have a lot of businesses that do want to participate. And this is our way of doing it and keeping account of what is being done and how it's being done and how the money is being spent.
Most businesses has part of their budget process, community involvement.
Right.
And advertisement.
Yes.
And this will work for both of them.
Oh, yes. This will be great for our city and it will be great for our companies that participate.
And it will help us make sure we don't go over the balances in our funds for the events. Because porter potties, I think they're just like 15,000 just to get portlets here for people to use the restroom. So we have to choose that over a bounce house sometimes. And kids need a bounce house and that bubble machine, they love it.
All right.
We're trying to help take on that cost that we can afford.
You see what a great event we had, the fourth, the big turnout we had. And I have heard from people everywhere that they really enjoyed that. I would like for us to be able to continue doing those kinds of events here in our city. And with donations, that would be one way.
And it's not always money. I will say like Nike wanted to do soccer balls.
Right.
It lets me show y'all that we received 50 soccer balls from Nike and make sure those soccer balls are going to those kids.
Right.
And I'm telling you, it was used for the citizens, not internally or anything else, or just given out to somebody else.
Okay, thank you. You will know every, you will know every penny that comes in, every item that comes in, and how it goes out.
And y'all do this by sending the company's letters?
Yes, ma'am. And the reason we are trying to get it done is the companies, they ask for 90 days ahead of time because their home offices have to give them the okay to do it. Yes, ma'am. Yeah.
And also I just want to add too, since we did approve, the keepovers beautiful. I have keepovers beautiful on the list. So if they wanted to do the trash bins or they wanted to do stuff like that, we could put their logo on that.
Right. Any other questions? May I have a vote then?
I have a motion.
I mean, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, second. May I have a vote?
Yes.
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 Five to zero. It passes.
Okay, item number four, discuss the appointment of George Leverett to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mayor and council, I would like to state that this was a clerical error on my part and should have stated, discuss the appointment of George Leverett to the Community Development Commission Type B Board. This item was placed on the agenda at the request of Mayor Pro Tem Slough. I spoke with Mr. Leverett and shared that it, and he shared that it is his intention was to assist the CDC Type B Board in making quorum. His request to serve on both boards was simply an effort to be helpful and would like to let you know if he is unable to serve on both boards, he would like to stay on the planning and zoning.
Have any questions?
No. Can this be discussed since it has the wrong commission on it legally?
I think because they're so intertwined that no action can be taken on the item, but I think it can be discussed, just ma'am.
Sergio?
No, since he is doable, can a person be on two boards?
There's no...
Mr. Holland?
I think, I mean, I have to go back. That's what our ordinances are for. But I think we have in our, what, 1.0106 or something like that in our code, something like that. I believe that we said that they can't serve on more than one board of commissions at a time. I think that's what we said.
I'm sorry. I did ask this question at the last board meeting and I was told there was no, no city ordinance that stops somebody from serving on multiple boards. Anyway, I digress. Everything changes every day.
Well, I'm not sure. So that's the reason.
I remember the same thing because we had other appointments. So...
We were told that he could serve on two boards?
The only thing that I did say was because it was a CDC and Planning and Zoning Commission that there is a...
That's a conflict.
Yeah, there could potentially be a conflict of interest. And we would have to very closely watch that to make sure we didn't have a conflict of interest.
Because he would have to sit, may have sit out on one or the other.
On one or the other. And I did say that.
Yes.
But when I looked at the ordinances and everything, there was nothing that stated nobody could serve on two boards. And that was the discussion.
So he's okay with where he's at now?
He's currently, right now, he's on planning and zoning and CDC. That's what was approved at the last council meeting.
Okay. Very rarely do we have businesses go to the CDC. Most of them go to the EDC. The CDC, we sometimes have some funding, but it's very rare. And then in those situations, Mr. Leverett would be directed to abstain?
Right.
Are you okay with that, sir?
I am.
Okay.
And just for the record, there is a conflict of interest sheet that would have to be filled out with me and then provided to Lynette or the staff liaison. And then you would have to renew yourself and you... And then you would have to renew yourself, and you can't speak, just putting that on the record. And has she filed with the city secretary?
When there's a situation.
Yes.
But that's going to be very rare.
But it could happen.
It could, but he would have to abstain.
But it would be, again.
But he just finished.
I can't think of anything in the recent past.
If he just finished out his term on, uh, the Planning and Zoning, then he could go for it at that, you know, to the CDC.
Right.
Both of his, uh, the CDC appointment and the PMZ appointment end on May thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. They're both one years.
On twenty-sixth.
On twenty-sixth.
So it's just an eight month.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
And at that time, he could pick and choose to do one.
Right.
Uh-huh, correct.
So there's no voting on this. It was just a discussion topic, so I don't think there's an issue.
Uh, we have to vote.
We don't need.
We can't, we can't vote on it.
We can't vote on it.
Okay.
And it doesn't look like, so I, I checked council under compost, because I remember we did, but it looked like whenever we redid it, and we've done this all the time, it doesn't look like we, we kept the prohibition that you can't be on two at the same time. So apparently, at some point, we changed that.
So how many members does it take to run a, a CDC? I mean, why is there not a corps?
Seven, seven, and it takes five for a quorum.
So there's not five board members?
They don't all show up.
They don't, they haven't made quorum in months.
It's been months and months.
Is there anything in the CDC bylaws that would prohibit it?
I didn't see anything.
Okay.
Just the potential of a possible conflict of interest.
Yeah.
And he would have, he would have to abstain.
Okay, that was my other question.
So no action.
So am I going to have to bring this back next time, or? No? Okay, okay. I'm just clarifying.
Right.
Do you want to appoint him to the CDC?
He, he is.
He is.
Oh, he's on the CDC?
He's on both, yeah.
Okay, then, yeah, that'd be fine.
That's the reason I said no action.
Right.
Okay, item number five, consider ordinance number oh-two-zero-two-five-dash-oh-nine-oh-four-eight, adopting a budget for the City of Wilmer for fiscal year October first, twenty twenty-five, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. And providing the expenditures for said fiscal year shall be made into ordinance with said budget. And we have Ms. Patricia Albrecht, our Consulting Finance Director.
Good evening, um, so, uh, we decided to bring this back, uh, tonight for your consideration. So I'm here to answer any questions that you may have, um, about the budget. Um, so I'm, I'm open to hearing your questions.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Um, going through this paperwork, um, it looks like the, we, a lot of stuff was cut, trying to keep it down because the situation right now. Um, but then it wasn't totally, there's, um, I have a complaint with how this, all of this that you read and our, um, uh, our administrator read, um, be friends. Y'all can just read it. And then when we get our copies, you can't even read it with glasses on.
I, I understand, and I did provide a larger font.
Yeah, 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 I got that, but I'd already went through this with that. Couldn't even see it with a magnified glass.
And, and I'm glad that you pointed that out, because I will provide that, um, you know, alternative for council members who would like to see that. So I have created that in a larger print. So for next time, I will have two copies. One that goes on the website, you know, for the public, and then another one that will be provided to the city secretary to provide to, uh, council and mayor, whoever needs it.
Yes, yes, yes.
Sure.
We got that, but this was after the fact. I'd already went through the fifth.
I understand.
You know, trying to, uh, you made a lot of cuts in here. But I, this front page you have on here, um, so, the total expenditures is still going to be over our funding balance.
For the, the summary page, yes, that's all, that is all the funds. It includes every single fund that the city budgets for, yes. And that summary page is primarily provided for outside agencies that come into our website to see our budget, and they want to see a professionally put-together budget that provides a summary of every single fund. So that in the future, if they want to come and see how is the city doing, they can go fund by fund to look at it. And I have been requested by our financial advisors and bond counsel to have that. It's very important to have that page for them to look at for the future. They can come back and pull it up and see. Everything is at a glance. It's mostly for them to see that.
Can I make a comment that's circulating around? You know, there, there was comment made that the city is five hundred thousand dollars in debt. Honestly, it's, it's more than that.
Yes.
This five hundred thousand dollar budget or expenditure that's right here, that is required TIF that we are required to pay.
Yes.
And it was for the potential growth. So can you put this in the recording? What TIF is
Yes.
for the citizens of this town, so they will be educated?
Of course. Yes, the tax increment finance is a, is a financing instrument that a lot of cities, um, provide to developers, to stores. I mean, you could look at the city of Frisco, they've got a ton of TIFs. And it's to reinvest. It, it's a tax increment reinvestment zone. And the city has, I think, two or three of these. And, um, and we're just now starting to transfer the required money that had to be transferred in the past, and it never was.
Thank you. The, from previous years, previous administrators, previous, previous council did not do their due diligence in setting money aside
That's true.
as required by law. So the current council is having to catch that up.
That is correct. Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
Um, I have a lot of questions about this, uh, budget, but it's, um, I just, uh, I'm not, I'm not pleased with, with what we have here.
So, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this catch-up that we're talking about, is it happening in increments or all at once?
It's at increments, because in the past, the city could not afford to set aside those property taxes that are by law required to be transferred to the TIF. Because we never had money, like I've discussed before, because the tax rate was too low. Whoever prepared the budgets in the past didn't do a good job. I'm just going to be totally honest. Once I came here and I saw that fiscal year twenty-five and fiscal year twenty-four, and trying to get the, um, audits done, it's all over the place. It was not done correctly. And so, now we're trying to catch up by doing this. Five hundred thousand dollars, by the way, is really low. We're going to start getting the bills from the developers soon, and I'm going to have to come back to you if it's more than five hundred thousand, so that we can pay them. Because the city signed an agreement with them, saying, we're going to pay you this, um, when you bring us that. And so now, they've already produced all of that. And so, I'm working with the TIF consultant to see how much the city's going to owe. And five hundred thousand is all I could spare for this coming fiscal year. That's all we can spare. And including this fiscal year we're in, twenty-five, that's why I brought the budget amendment up. We need to move five hundred thousand, and I already moved it because the city administrator told me to. And we want to put that five hundred thousand this year. And the next year, I'm moving another five hundred thousand, so we have a million. But it's a lot more that we need to be putting towards that TIF every single year.
Okay, I'm understanding that we're required to do this. Has there been any penalties assessed to us because we have not complied?
No.
And many of the businesses have been just waiting.
Yes, yes.
And I can remember before I ever got on council, I moved back to Wilmer in twenty twelve, and I started, you know, we had the development up there, F of Malloy Bridge Road with the railroad. That was one of the first ones. Then we had the ones that came off of Pleasant Run going that direction. And, uh, you know, I was just listening. I would come to not all the council meetings, but just listen. And I kept thinking, where is the TIF? And there were some other citizens in the town that kept asking, where's the TIF money? These businesses are going to ask for their money, and we did not have it set aside.
And the reason that we're not in trouble is because those developers have not come forward yet. They haven't invoiced us. Okay, that's the whole thing. They haven't invoiced us. But now, I already got an email today, hey, so-and-so is already going to invoice you, so I'm just waiting for the invoice.
And, and there's no interest. You know, it's just like a, we've got the development, we've gotten a new tax base.
Yes.
That's what it's for. It's like a reinvestment of the tax base that they provided to the city.
Yes.
Why are we paying Medline?
Because the city entered into an agreement years ago with Medline, saying, if you come here and build your manufacturing company here and bring in all that sales tax revenue, the city will give you sixty-two point five percent of that sales tax revenue back. So, when they sell all of these Medline things, all of these supplies, they pay the state their sales tax, as everybody else. And then they send us a bill saying, hey, this is how much we sold and how much we paid the state comptroller. Now you cut us a check for sixty-two and a half percent of that. So the city has to give them that back.
There's several places that it's in there, you know.
Yeah, CDC pays a share, EDC pays their share, and general fund pays their share. Yeah.
Any other questions?
How many years is that agreement?
I don't remember. I mean, it, I can't think off the top of my head.
Tell me.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I don't want to say a number.
Right.
I'm not sure. But it was a significant number of years. If I'm thinking right.
Do we have that agreement with any other?
I'm sorry?
Do we have that same agreement or a similar agreement with any other business that's located?
Everyone is different. Yeah, a, a, all, all of them. If they have a three-eighty agreement, if they have a TIF agreement or whatever, everybody has their own agreement.
So that's part of the TIF?
No, 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 I'm just saying in general.
I'm asking outside the TIF then, is there a similar agreement with any other businesses?
Yes, there, there are several, yes. It, within the TIF, there are several developers. I can't tell you off the top of my head right now, because this was just given to me recently, um, because the city administrator would handle that. I, I haven't had time to read everything.
But Medline is the only one that involves sales tax?
Yes.
That's what she was asking.
Mm-hmm, yeah, Medline is the only one, yeah.
Just Medline. Any other questions?
No, um, I, I obviously a lot of stuff in, in here, but it's just, uh, uh, I'm not going to question it right now, because I'm just, I'm not pleased with this. We want to more, and we don't have it, so.
Well, we have it in investments. We just don't have it in the fluid checking accounts. We can pull the money from the investment accounts. Is that correct?
For what?
When she's saying that we're spending more than we're bringing in, that we have the money, we just have to pull it from an investment account. Is that correct?
Yes, if there is a fund that is showing, um, a negative, you know, revenue or expenditures, on the bottom, there's a fund balance. So we, we pull from that fund balance to, to pay for that. And mostly, it's for those projects or expenditures that go from year to year.
Any other questions?
Um, if I remember correctly, you said at our last time we discussed this, that the biggest part of our budget spending is going to be on debt service. Is that correct?
Well, if you're talking only about the debt service fund, yes. Um, but no, the general fund has the most expenditures, and most of the expenditures are for public safety. Now, if you're referring to the tax rate, are you referring to the tax rate? Um, because the tax rate is, is going to pay for the debt service that we have coming up in, uh, for the twenty-twenty-one tax note. And that is the largest expenditure in that fund, yes, the debt service fund.
Um, some of these, um, on a, on a budget, going back to the eighties, uh, this was something the departments lived by. You, you know, you stayed in that budget. No, we can't get this, you know, this wasn't approved, all of this. Or they would have to come before the council and, you know, ask for an amendment.
Sure.
Um, but on, and some of these, um, it's, 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 it's just, uh, spend, 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 you know. No, um, I'm not, you know who you are. I'm not going to call any names or any, any departments, but it, I mean, they just spend and buy, and it's like it's Christmas.
Well, you do remember that I said that the expenditure budget for the general fund for this proposed budget is only increasing by four percent. That includes salary increases, that includes benefits increases. So all of these departments have cut a lot off of their budgets, each and every department. So that when you add it all up from this year to next, it's only four percent that's increasing. Remember, your-
Health insurance go up?
Health insurance is going up fourteen percent. So it's actually cutting the budget quite a bit, including the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we are cutting in positions that are gone. Almost a million dollars are being cut from this budget. So there, the departments are barely moving whatever they spend or have budgeted this year to next year, and they're saying that's all we're going to get. It's a very conservative budget.
Any other questions?
At this time, I am going to call for a vote. May I have a second?
May I have a motion? Motion?
Um, I'm making the motion to have a vote. May I have a second?
You, you can't make the motion as the chair.
Do what?
You can't make the motion as the chair.
Who made the motion? Who made the motion? Okay. I will make a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year budget.
And I second.
Thank you. It's actually got, real, real fast, mayor, and I apologize, but that's straight from the tax code. It's twenty-six oh-five B, receipt. It's actually written out of the tax code how the motion has to be. That's what I put it out like.
But that's for the tax rate, not the surgery?
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? You're right. I'm already jumping ahead. You're right.
Okay.
I'm on the tax rate.
Okay. I make a motion for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget as presented.
And I second.
Thank you. May I have a vote?
Yes.
No.
No. No.
Yes.
The budget fails, so the city is gone. I tell you all, mayor. And you only, you only have three people to blame.
Okay.
Thank y'all workers. Thank you for your work. We, we appreciate what y'all.
Oh, yes, yes. We waited a week. We had a planning Saturday session where two people did not come, where we had discussed our goals.
our goals. I have the floor.
She has the floor.
And we, and one of them, one of the person had something on their foot, surgery on a Saturday. Another one made the comment to me, because I asked her if she was ill. I didn't think it was worth my time. That was a quote. We had a week for them to go back and review and ask questions. We come up today, and they're complaining about being too thick. Y'all don't know, the staff has taken budget pages, and they cut them in half to blow them up. Now, we have-
No, her three men?
She's speaking. We have planning time. I don't understand why the city is being held by three people. You, as a community, y'all need to understand, we will continue functioning, but understand, look at the people standing against the wall over here. Their paycheck is going to be-
Those people are lifesavers, man.
Their paycheck will be less than it currently is, because they will be picking up the cost of the increase in insurance because of these three people. That needs to get out into the community. Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
The health insurance will stop September thirtieth.
Yes.
Because it's up also, and the carrier has to have the approval and the budget.
But didn't we approve that?
It has to be in the, it has to be in the budget, and it has to be approved, or Blue Cross and Blue Shield will not continue. They're waiting for the budget to be passed.
May I have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I was under the impression that we were told last time that if the current budget was not approved, we would refer to the last-
No, ma'am, we did not.
That is what we heard. That's exactly what Mr. Holla is saying. I see nothing wrong with operating under the current budget because-
Okay, you understand that TIF money that was in, that's in here, that's not going to be in the new budget. So when we have a business that comes up and says they need their money, where are we going to pull it from? There's many things that were in this new budget. If y'all want to discuss just keeping it zero line, but you still have to adopt a budget. It has to be sent to the state.
We have not a few days left on there. You know, ma'am, we-
Oh, my God. Phyllis, how many times did we have to discuss something?
Don't scream in my ear, okay?
Well, how many times do we have to discuss something? How many more days do you need to review it? You've had since-
We didn't do have anything to do with the budget.
Because you chose not to come on that Saturday.
That was a retreat. That was a retreat.
We planned. We planned. We set goals.
We didn't get to plan. It was a retreat.
It was not a retreat. Y'all did not want a retreat. We sat there and we planned. We set goals. We talked about what was going to be priorities in the new year. You chose not to come.
Yes, I did, because I didn't feel like listening to, it was a, it was a retreat. And I wasn't required in that I had to be here. And no, I had other things to do, and I was not here. So you, you missed a lot, too.
I have not missed. I got out of hospital today, and I came here tonight.
Boo. I'm sorry. We've got, we can review this a little bit. We never got, the city council did not have any input in this budget.
You just voted.
You spent in the faces of every employee of our city.
You never took anything into consideration. You have had time and time. I have taken my time reviewing all of this, and it's still a lot.
It's still a same old?
I don't know. I don't know.
It doesn't take us that long.
And it still weighs, it's-
No, it's not. No, it's not.
Everyone running around with credit cards, credit cards are out of control.
People are not running around with credit cards.
Departments.
Every department has to have a card. We purchase things. The city has to work.
Yes.
But you don't want the city working. You want to go back to the eighties, and we'll never go back to the eighties.
In this meeting, or what?
You're willing to walk out at any moment if you want to. We have other things to discuss.
Well, let's discuss them, instead of you, you, you tying it all. We voted against it, okay?
Go ahead, sit down. The only thing I'm going to ask right now, we're not doing anything else, Mr. Aubrey Hester would like to make a change. Aubrey, could you come forward, please?
Mayor, councilman, my name's Aubrey Hester. I live two nineteen South Dallas Avenue, Wilmer, Texas.
Thank you, sir.
Been here for about eighty-seven years. It comes to my attention here not too many weeks ago that my property on zoning has been altered or changed since the late eighties, early nineties. The back property of two hundred Ferris has been commercial property. I have paid taxes on that commercial property since then, according to the county. But the new city map has me single-family dwelling. Now, I come up, what changed it? I think it was back in about twenty-one it was, because my tax rates go way back past that, and they all show commercial. So I'm thinking that maybe other people have this problem in town, just don't realize it. Now, I'm not here to ask for my back taxes or anything like that. I was fortunate enough to meet with St. Holla.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, and Ms. Lynette, and the mayor, this, yesterday at noon, with my city, with my attorney, and we have worked out a plan that we think that will get it solved, what my problem is. But I wanted the council to be aware that there may be other citizens in town that has this same problem. If I've had it, then anybody can have it. I don't know when the maps changed, but Dallas County did just get up one morning and say, "Well, we're going to make Aubrey's property commercial today." Something had to be put in, but they have done an investigation, and they don't never see when it was ever zoned, period. So what happened to the records? I don't know. I wouldn't privy to those. But I want to thank the mayor and St. Holla, and Lynette, if she's here, that I appreciate the help they gave me, and I think we've got a plan that'll resolve this, and Michael thinks that we can get this done in about thirty days. And if it happens, then I'll really appreciate it. But I want to make the other people aware, if your property is on commercial, you might ought to look and see what the city's got it, because it's just two different things. Me and Lynette looked at it. She saw what I saw. Dallas County CAD shows commercial. City CAD shows residential. Where it comes to difference, I don't know. But it needs to be checked, because we've got a lot of people in town could be affected by this problem.
And I've got something to tell you. We're going to help you out.
Good. I'd appreciate it.
If there's a mistake done to our zoning, we'll be sure to help you out. That's what we're here for.
Well, that's why I'm here, and I believe you. That's why I didn't leave you none of you out. I want you to know what's happening and what assistance I'm getting.
Adjustment they give, whatever they give, like two thousand, and actually, everybody knows about, what was it called, the property adjustment or what?
Boundary adjustment.
Boundary adjustment.
So, so you see what I'm saying? All this time, I'm paying high taxes.
And you're not the only one.
And, but if we don't take attention to it, we can't let it continue, especially on those folks.
And I was done in terms of somehow.
You're right. I appreciate it. You're right. And I appreciate the councils and mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Have a blessed day.
I have a question, please. Obviously, Mr. Hester has brought it up that the county map showed a different kind of zoning than the city map. Mr. Holla, can you tell me which one is right?
No, Dallas, I was talking to them. I helped them with something else. I think, just to give you my experience with Dallas County, a couple of months ago, we had done something with the property back in the summer of, how is it working?
Twenty-two.
Or twenty-two. Okay, the summer of twenty-two, we, so we, we filed it last year. Okay, so it would have been, from the time I called, it was eight months prior. I called, I had, I know we filed it because I have the document, the receipt, the former city secretary filed it, and she attended to me, and I had it. I called on the phone with Dallas County, stayed on the phone, I was on there for twenty minutes before somebody helped me. I did not charge the city, by the way, it was all free. So I waited on the phone for twenty minutes. When I finally talked to somebody, she goes, she goes, "Can I have the?" And I gave her all the document numbers, and she goes, "Oh, yeah, this has been sitting in the queue to be processed." I said, "We filed that in July of last year, right?" She goes, "Yes, sir, I'll have that done in the next two or three days." So that was my experience with helping them out on a different piece of property from D-CAD. So we have not been the best about keeping records, so I, that's a great question that you asked, and I don't know whether or not our records or D-CAD would be a better resource. So I think Mr. Hester brings up a great point, and I think it's always, it's good property ownership to always, every, I'm not saying every day or every month or whatever, but every once in a while, check on your property, see what everybody's got going on. I know people that have called me because they've lived in HOAs, which we know are almost as evil as much of the mafia as the state, but the HOAs, hey, they had, they owe nine hundred and twelve dollars for HOA fees, didn't realize it. Well, an HOA went because of the deeds and everything, they just went, got liens on the property for, you know, plus the attorney's fees for like fifteen hundred dollars, and those people never knew about it. So it's always, Mr. Hester brings up a good point, it's always a good idea to every once in a while, check on the status of your property, see what you've got going on.
May I answer a same comment? When this was brought to my attention, I sent a text to our city secretary, asking her if she could find the ordinance and the map, or in the minutes of when that was adopted. And so, you know, if you can't, if you can't find the records, then the county, it didn't happen. You know, there's another issue that I've been questioning, and everybody says, "Oh, it happened in the eighties about Betline and College Street." You know, I keep being told, "Well, it's on the map." Well, where is, where are the minutes? And if you can't find the minutes, and if you can't find the ordinance, it did not happen. And so, you know, when I grew up in this town, and I had a conversation with Mr. Hester, that was agricultural. When did it change from agricultural to residential? And he could not answer that. When did it, and so it's changed from residential to commercial? So it's just like, things are just changing, but we don't have proof and an ordinance of when it changed. Not only did it change, and a city address changed.
Yeah. Well, I have one lot on this property. It's in the Ferris Street. My deeds call for Old Town thirty-seven Betline. Out of the current city map, it's one-ten Ferris Street. When did it change? And who?
And there's no backup on that.
There's no backup.
And the county, the county still has it as Old Town Betline.
Old Town Betline is what the county still has.
You know, it's a-
But I was never notified either way.
If you can't, if you can't back up your records, it didn't happen. And so, you know, I told Mr. Holla, "Look on College Street. There's a lot of them that I believe on College Street are wrong."
And if I may, a few months ago, our city secretary told us that there was missing records in our, in our city. And she brought that up, what, a few months ago, a month ago, month and a half ago?
And, and we all-
And she turned it into the, to, 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 so there's going to be an investigation.
May I say something to the city council?
Huh?
May I say something to the city council?
This is my son, Lou.
I live on Dallas Avenue over here, at two-thirty-four. In 2021, my whole deal got rezoned, light industrial. Nobody never told me. I found out by accident.
And, and I-
But wait a minute, hold on. What I'm saying is, the county didn't do it, the city did it, and we can't find out why.
And then boundary adjustment, sir, that was done, they said?
No, no, sir.
Also, I'd like to mention that a member of the P and Z board came to me with this same issue. Said, "Is the city map right that says single-family, or is the..." Well, if the P and Z doesn't know, how can we trust anything that we have? And this also has happened to me, Aubrey. My farm, which has about eighty-five head of livestock on it, is not agricultural anymore, it's commercial.
Yes, ma'am. That's my question, because now I was told I can't sell my house falling to, because it's, it's commercial.
The downside on this-
By a person at this city.
The other part of this is that we've been on commercial for however long we have, and have been paying taxes on it at that rate.
Yes, ma'am. That's what I've been doing for the last four years.
Part of you pay a higher rate of commercial.
Yes. That's why I'm asking the city council.
So what do we do?
Okay?
And we'll definitely look into it.
Appreciate it, because like I say-
What do we do?
We will. We will. I'd have to look at each specific situation.
Definitely, every, every unit.
Okay, I'm just thinking, my whole street, my whole side of the street, all five families have been done its way.
I know you can't picture what you're talking about.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
And they built the building behind us.
Right.
And they done it right before they built that building, and they never told nobody. And then they come in and built that big building, which I ain't going to guess the building been there, but they done it and never told us. So we got cheated.
Actually, there was two, supposed to be a public conference.
Yes, sir, and there was never one filed. That's what I'm saying.
Right. The public, the planner at that time was doing everything by squares. And I know, I know how it happened, but you also got to remember, there were some previous city secretaries, even before Ms. Downs and the two previous ones, we've all been here for a long time, and things would be voted on, and they were never filed with the county.
Right.
And so, you know, that were involved in a lawsuit. We did find that ordinance, but, you know, you know, if, to me, if you can't find an ordinance and you can't find the minutes, it never happened.
And I agree with you, ma'am, but when it keeps showing up on my taxes like that, what do I do?
I got to be the bad guy here, and everybody get mad at me, but the agenda item, we've got to keep that vote.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I just, I'm just saying.
I let it go, but I had to-
Yeah, I'm just saying, though, it's, it's not fair to everybody. You brought it up.
Sir, we appreciate it.
I mean, it's a whole street over here like that.
Thank you, sir. We'll, we'll, we'll get it.
Yes.
Thank you.
It is eight oh seven, and we are joined.